June 26th Select Board Minutes, calling the meeting at 6:31. Can you all stand for the pleasure of the agents? All those in favor?
The United States of America and the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the principle of liberty and justice for all.
One meeting note. Why do you have to flag this room?
Yes, we do. Alright, so for those of you who don't know me, my name is Brendan Schamann. I'm the vice chair. I'm here now traveling. She's on the call, but since she's remote, I will be chairing the meeting. There she is. Okay, so we're gonna just go right down the agenda. The first is the approval of meeting minutes, May 29th, special meeting, June 5th, regular meeting, executive session, and June 14th, regular meeting, executive session.
I move to approve the May 29th, 2024 Select Board Special Meeting Minutes. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Brugos, aye.
I move to appoint, to approve the June 5th, 2024 Select Board Meeting Minutes.
Sir, there.
Aye. I move to approve the June 5th, 2024 Select Board Executive Session Meeting Minutes Not For Release.
I would say, June 5th.
Aye, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Brugos, aye.
I move to approve the June 14th, 2024 Select Board Special Meeting Minutes. That's it. I'm gonna abstain because I wasn't present.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Brugos, aye.
I move to approve the June 14th Select Board Executive Session Meeting Minutes Not For Release.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Brugos, aye.
So moving on to number three on the agenda, one and three-year Board and Committee appointments. So just for the record here, everyone that we're going to be confirming an appointment tonight has taken their ethics training, their voice, their policies, that everyone has been working with. Um, so, back to the center. Looking for a motion.
So we have one with filled in with names.
Yes, yeah. I can also come up.
I couldn't get a password.
Oh, okay.
Maybe we can talk later.
Brendan, if you want to catch me if I got the colors wrong, I can make the motion.
Start with, start with the one here.
I move to approve the following individuals for appointment for one-year term expiring June 30th, 2025. ADA Coordinator Kevin Rudden, Building Inspector John Erickson, CMRPC Billion Brazino, CRPC Planning Billion Brazino, Custodian Soldiers and Sales and Graves Robin Fletcher, Emergency Management Director Mark Pacino, Municipal Hearings Officer Ellen Agro, Town Council Caris North, Veterans Agent Robin Fletcher, Veterans Bureau, Bureau Agent Robin Fletcher, ZDA Alternate Lonny Tenio, Town Accountant Eric Kincharf and Associates, Autorator Roselle DeClark and Associates.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
I move to approve the following individuals for appointment for three-year term expiring June 30th, 2027. They are...
Just for the record, Mazar is current.
Yeah, and Mazar Community Preservation Committee Commission, Michael Mandalia Community Preservation Commission, Peter Dutton Community Preservation Commission, Conservation Commission, Michael Mandalia, Conservation Commission Susan Callahan, Conservation Commission Bob Sweet, Council on Aging Pagan Gera, Council on Aging Andy Van Der Sluip, Finance Committee Mike Mandalia, Historical Commission Dan Byer, Historic District Committee Dan Byer, and Zoney Board of Appeals John Van Der Sluip.
All those in favor?
Second.
All those in favor?
Great job, like, brain filtering. That excels.
Could I ask a quick question, Brendan? Sorry, is that, is somebody taking minutes?
Yeah, I'm taking minutes.
You, okay, thank you. The audio's a little bit iffy sometimes, so I can't hear everything.
Yeah, so also for the record, our interim TA is on vacation and our community assistant, we have a new one starting out here, so we're all trying to do multiple functions here. Alright, so moving on to item four on the agenda. So, just wanted to thank Billie for your service. I wanted to acknowledge the contributions across the town, but appreciate the service. Discussion?
Would be awesome if you could stay in Palmton Town. I mean, you live here, you're a big part of it. It's like, come, they can see Justin. I mean, we really appreciate all the effort, but like, you're awesome, Big Harley Communities.
Yes.
There's always a space.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
I know that my meeting is on, as a chair of the PinCon, fantastic budget here, and I appreciate everything that we've been able to work on together, and I'm very disappointed to see.
Yes, I am leaving, but I'm not gonna be far. So we certainly, I will stay involved, and everybody knows where I am, so don't hesitate to reach out. Always there to lend a hand, no matter what.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
We'll find you.
So there's two orders of business around this agenda. The first being, there's standard practice when a fire is used to engage services of the town auditor, just to make sure everyone is okay for the replacement, standard practice, recommendation of the interim TAs that we accept the proposals from our town auditor for the services. We also have to talk about the appointment of the town treasurer and collector, which is statutory required. Sorry.
Number two.
So, with that, I open it up for discussion. We have some motions. Anyone wants to make a motion or open up a topic for discussion, I'd be very excited.
I move to appoint Chase A. Carides Interim Treasurer Collector for a term of hiring January 8th, 2025, or until a permanent solution is identified in Philly. Five seconds left.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Brugos, aye.
Sorry, Elena, we get like 10 milliseconds on you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you.
So, I think it's enormously important for this to happen. Alright, so moving on to the second part of this, second order of business, second motion regarding the services of the auditor.
Yeah, I would move to accept the proposals submitted by Roselle DeClark and Associates for the additional services due to the transition on the position of treasurer or collector.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Brugos, aye.
Any further discussion before we move on? So, item number five on the agenda is a discussion and vote for any municipal agreement for shared planner services. So this is basically looking to update the agreement that we have for the town planner, that's Jack and Billie.
I would move to approve the intermunicipal agreement for shared planner services.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Brugos, aye.
Moving on to item number six. Horrible Parade, come on up.
We have on our agenda to approve the Horrible Parade for July 3rd. Do you want to say a few words about it?
So we've done the Horrible Parade for as long as I've been here. It's a, pretty much a July 4th parade for kids to dress up in costumes for July 4th. This year, we're gonna, pending the weather, we're gonna try and go back to the original route of starting at the top of Maple Street and parade down into the town hall, the town hall parking lot. Parking is gonna be up in the old airport, 32 Hastings Street. We are working, the union, the fire union is who holds this, and we're working with PD for traffic, and everything should be all set to go. It's at 6:30 on July 3rd, so I'm kinda here if anybody has any questions about it.
Sounds good. I know personally, my kids love that event a lot.
Yeah, the kids love it. We have a lot of giveaways and tickets and ice cream from George's and these Celtics.
Yeah, this is the plug way to tell people that's free food and free ice cream.
Yeah.
Free ice cream.
Yeah, ice cream truck, ice cream truck will be there, hot dogs, chips.
Yeah, I'm excited. That's the route that I walked with my kids when we first got here, so I'm excited to see that come back.
Awesome. So if there's no other discussion, then looking for a motion.
Move to approve the Horribles Parade to be held on July 3rd, 2024. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Brugos, aye.
Thank you.
Put your kids out there on July 3rd.
Alright, item number seven is to approve or vote on the Lions Club Circus for July 9th and 10th at One North Ave. Any discussion?
This is sort of a tradition for me to show up. Can I stay here or do I? I just am here to express my dismay over this particular circus, Zovini, that brings animals to Mendon. We were successful at banning wild animal, wild and exotic animals a few years ago, but they still have dogs versus ponies in these shows that they, they're constantly on the move, confined in cages, trailers, not climate controlled, and they do, you know, shows almost every day of the month, sometimes two, two days, two shows per day. And I just wish the Lions Club could come up with another way to make money or choose a circus that doesn't use animals. There are options out there, Circus Smurcus, Barnum &amp; Bailey, Ringland Brothers, excuse me, I know that's a big circus to bring to Mendon, but they are doing great business without animals. Animals shouldn't be entertainment, and it's too bad kids grow up thinking in those terms rather than appreciating animals as sentient beings. They can go to, you know, animal sanctuaries, shelters, and see animals on their own terms there. And I've already seen this advertised on, on the Channel 8 station, local station, and on some Facebook pages, so it seems like it's out there before it's even been approved by the board here, so I, that's a little, you know.
That may be on us a little bit because of our lack of support staff. I think it's only been on to the agenda, not given facts, but it was in, it's a month ago.
Yeah. So it's kind of a done deal every year without... Anyway, that, that's why I'm here, and I'll, I'll keep showing up every year just to, you know, speak for the animals, because they can't do it themselves.
Appreciate that. I would ask you to, I think, yes. What other things do you want to say?
Well, there's other things I could say, but nobody would probably agree with me, and it's not gonna make any difference, but I, I would just wish, you know, Mendon wouldn't automatically approve this every year. There's no oversight for what goes on at the circuses, and it's hard to know what goes on because they're always on the move. And these animals are just taken all over the country, in the Northeast, June, July, and August, they're booked up almost every day, traveling around New York State, Massachusetts, you know, use human entertainment.
So, with regards to this year, this, my understanding is that the particular circus, although it does use animals, it does comply with the bylaws, I understand it.
I'm sorry, it complies with what?
With the local bylaw, as I understand it.
Yes, exotic and wild animals, yeah.
So, there's a couple of things, and I remember this being the first thing that came on my first agenda last year, and, and I just wrote myself a long note. So I don't know enough about this to comment, although to understand your passion, but I remember one of the things that was brought up last year was that we do have an animal control officer, shouldn't they be visiting to check on things? I do think it's too late to do anything about the lions here, but I also think that it's never too late to do anything about the lions. You know, we can have that discussion, right? And we can also talk about, if you want to change the bylaw, there are ways to do that. We have structures in place. So I think there's a lot of options going forward, but I don't, you shouldn't wait for us, and, because if you do, this is what happens, like, we forget. So, just being honest, right? Because we're overwhelmed with a lot of other noisy things. And I hate to say be noisy, but there are other ways that we can work on being noisy in a gentler way throughout the year. So, why don't we exchange email afterwards, or you can just email me, it's jkuter, j-k-u-t-e-r at mendonmass.gov, and let's talk about some of the things we're available to do.
Appreciate that. Yeah, it took a big effort to get the ban on the wild and exotic animals a few years back. That was like...
But if enough people think it's worth it, that's why we're here.
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll find, let's find out. So I'm gonna move, just one, sorry, Tim, sorry, I didn't catch your name, so...
Oh, sorry, Carol.
Sorry for the minutes, yeah.
Carol Carnaval, 66 Uxbridge Road.
Thank you. So I'm gonna move to approve the Lions Club Circus on July 9th and 10th.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Brugos, aye.
Moving on to the other items.
Thanks very much.
So I'm gonna ask, we do have some residents here that are here to discuss the Level Street project, so I'd like to take that first, everybody, chapter 90 discussion.
Sure.
Guys, when it comes up, I'm gonna explain what's going on. So there's a, there's a drainage pipe on the Level Street that runs from a catch basin in front of Ridge Riego's house, and the pipe is from this 12-inch pipe, it's, it can be replaced. I was gonna replace it with a 16-inch pipe, but the neighbor across the street has voiced concerns about increasing the volume of water onto his property. I understand there's also some history between the neighbors there, so I suggested it go to Greg, and I think Greg talked to, is this... So I think the administrator did talk to you, as well as Mr. Vanderlock.
Yes, he did.
And we need to come up with a solution for this that's gonna be both parties, because when I was proposing to help with the flooding, and I know you can speak on the flooding that you've had at your house.
That's my front, yeah, my garage. It's happened about, I don't know, 12 to 15 times in the past 10 years. Ruined everything. Look at my basement.
And that's from that failing pipe going across the road.
It's a 12-inch pipe that is starting to collapse, just like many other pipes in the town.
Yeah, I see the water running down your side of the road there.
So we were gonna address the basin and the pipe.
But where is the basin?
The basin is right in front of the Ridge Riego's property.
Like, your driveway or your wall?
It's in, it's in the grass in front of the wall.
Yeah.
We were ready to replace it with a 16-inch pipe, increase the water, and put a new pipe in there, and the Vanderlocks are not okay with that.
Is that downhill?
It is. Everything goes like this. It is downhill. I haven't been able to get over there when we've had heavy rain to see, but Mr. Vanderlock told me that he is getting water in his basement as well, which I don't necessarily believe, because if you drive down the driveway and look at where the water's flowing, his house is higher than the stream bed, but without seeing it firsthand and being able to see what he's talking about, I, that's why I put a stop to, let's, let's not decide until we can figure this out.
So is the intent to figure it out here?
Yeah.
The intent, I, so that's...
I'm sure we're gonna figure anything out right here. I'd be curious what the options are. I heard one solution, I wanna understand what the other opportunities, if that's the solution. So Mr. Vanderlock is okay with the 12-inch pipe connected? He doesn't want to increase the volume onto his property. I don't feel that that is gonna alleviate the water problem from the other side of the road. And I, I just, I, it came to the board because there is a history there, there's other, I think there's zoning and other departments have been involved in this as well. So we, I think we need to come up with a solution to this. Well, I would think that we need to get all the group of parties together to talk about what the issues are. I'm not sure we can solve for sure right here. No, and I, this was, this was, Greg had said, let's put it on the agenda so that we can discuss it. I was kinda hoping that we can, with Mr. Vanderlock would be here tonight, so we'd have both parties here to discuss it, but... This feels like it's bigger than a breadbasket, figuring about this for the first time. I mean, I'd wanna understand what the possible solutions, alternative. I would expect to hear alternatives. I would understand, wanna understand what the current zoning is, is there any issues at all with different solutions? This potentially sounds like something we should involve town council, make sure that we're not gonna step on anybody's toes. Right. So it feels like this is very, this is a preliminary discussion, I understand that to make us aware, I'm guessing, but I would suggest we need to take some of the steps soon, quickly, because I feel like some people are having issues, right?
And is that system on his property, or is it on?
Town outlet's there. It's the town outlet, and it's the town easement, but he's maintained it, he maintains the grass on that. How many times have you been in there to clean it up? Right.
You clean up the basement by hand, because I can't get it cleaned.
I have a question. Kathleen Alexander, 14 Level Street. When Mr. Vanderlock bought Irene and Wally's property, had there already been an easement on that property prior to the sale?
This, I have no idea. This is where it's getting into other, it's zoning, and there's other departments that are involved in this, and this is just going from highway, and we have a pipe that needs to be replaced onto the road. It's bigger than that. There are zoning issues, there, there is a, what, a livery that's supposed to be going in?
That's on the 14th Level Street.
What about the illegal market law that he's up there? I mean, come on, you know, I think this is done out of spite, to be honest with you. So you gotta call it, go to some...
You can make a suggestion, but you could get, get all the bring the parties together. He's supposed to... So, real quick. Then we give Caris the master, while highways today has a certain authority in his position to go beyond any rightways. I mean, he may just have it all in the authority on his own. He's, I don't know the exact, but he's responsible all roadways, all drainage, so if he thinks something necessary by full volumes, and he came to go in there to determine that it's not affecting, that the slope isn't going down, the basements here, then I think, you know, even in John's hands, but maybe get John with, with Caris, have Caris make that decision, because ultimately, understatutorily, I think it's up to highways. Yeah, that's fine, yeah. I'd like to see some details to what the situation, not verbally, I mean, this is the situation, here are the potential solutions. I mean, I'm not aware of necessarily the statutory authority, if that's there and Caris confirms and John confirms it, that's cool. I'm assuming you actually, we have some leeway here because it's, it's a town road, and we gotta keep that running, right? So, and then... It's not, it's not so much affecting the roadway as it's affecting Ridge Riego's property. I just, then, once we have all the facts and the possibilities, we can bring all parties together, and it would be more by invitation, I think, so you either show up or you don't, but then we can have a discussion about how you move forward, right? And I'm sorry, what's the question over here?
Well, I've been there for 43 years, and that pipe was on the road when I first moved up there. We didn't put any pipes onto the road, it was there by the time. And Captain's lived there probably 50 years, never once have a complaint, and like somebody was saying, his house is way up high, there's no way that water's gonna get in his basement, and it's not even close to his house, really. So that's a lot of eye in the sky, right? So, it's an outfall, it's, it's late, it's got a stake there saying "outfall," right? Town put that there, I don't know how long it's open, but all we're asking for is to unplug the pipe and let the water flow. That's all. So if he wants to go to three-inch larger pipe, I wanted to put in two 15-inch pipes to really get the water out of there, but he, he said he thinks 15 will do it, they said they did a flow test, and we've been putting up with this for a while now, you know, we've been patient with it, right? It's getting to be where it's, you know, it's just, we're spinning our wheels here. We should be cut and dry, we should be allowed to be able to repair that pipe, connect it, and call it a day. So all we're asking for, not asking for anything else.
I have a question. Christopher Joe, 13 Level Street. The drainage issue, other than our yard flooding, the drainage is not our issue, none of it is our property, it's a public utility. My question is, who's liable for this right now? Because in another couple months, the rain will be coming. And, you know, I, five times this past year, I go over and work early, because we've got six inches of water standing for 24 or 40 years.
The bylaw, yeah.
That's right. The pipe itself, about whatever size it is, whatever's going on...
It's been there one year.
It's, it was there working at its capacity at one time. Now, with the water, you know, all of our catch basin is full of water, the street is flowing at about 30 to 50 percent, so the pipe never, the water level never gets below half the height of the pipe, so the pipe is completely failing. But in a normal heavy situation, we're in trouble.
And the pipe is flowing uphill, besides. I've never seen water go uphill on its own. Because of the road saddle, the road saddle, the pipe is actually going uphill, so it just needs to be taken out, put in a new pipe, and call it a day.
We have done everything that we could over the past couple of years to evade damages, but it's, it's...
We'll just get, well, it sounds like we need to get John the legal support that he needs, and we'll move forward.
That's right.
Please, please.
Thank you. End of stories.
Alright. I second that.
So the action, John, is to ensure that you... make sure that it is still there.
Yeah, I can, I can even call them a car, too.
Yeah, just tell us, it's a little bit curious. If you could.
Just an expedite, because obviously we're getting into rainy season coming, September, and we don't wanna drag our feet in. Then what we do on road issues, too, because the road does flood in certain spots, too, so I knew that's part of it, so the road, well, it has nowhere to go, also, so.
And Captain Alexander, again, 14 Level Street. We do give the town easement onto our property, because the dip in the road was always flooding in the wintertime. It was a dangerous situation. And the unintended consequences was that we do get more water onto our lower grasslands than we did prior to that easement, but I think it was for the greater good for the, the road.
There's some ducks coming in.
Yeah.
In the road.
In the road.
The road.
So I think it's important that we address this sooner than later.
Yeah, I'm sorry, sir, I didn't catch your name.
Oh, I'm Robert Roger, 13 Level Street.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thanks for having me, I appreciate you guys sticking it out in the little room.
John, you should probably, you can get some more.
Another 10 years.
No, you're not gonna wait another 10 years. And I promise you.
I wanted my school to die.
I promise you, you're not waiting another 10 years.
It's ridiculous, it's gonna be, you know.
So, so we're actually gonna turn something on for you, we're gonna skip to Colonial Power. Quite a few people here, very small room, so. So this is Colonial Power, update on power aggregation, and we're looking for an update on the pricing, and if possible, I'm getting delegated to go in.
So, we did meet, we got some very thick old pricing, somewhere in the range of two cents below what basic service price will be. But the energy company thought we should move forward, so what we're asking for tonight is simply assigning someone to sign for the town, and pricing would be due tomorrow. We would then go through that with whoever the signatory is. And if, if we found that amenable tomorrow, you would sign, and we would-
Getting forward, yes.
Making a plan on how to educate and so forth, but tonight, given the circumstances, I just thought I would be as short as I could be, because the pricing is now old, so it is, it is very favorable, and we just need someone to sign tomorrow if the pricing stays the same. If not, we'll push that off, you know, you won't sign, and we'll just move forward.
Carolyn Bartel, 50 Asylum Street. I'm on the land use committee and energy use committee panel. And we've been working on the aggregation. And so your, your pricing will come in like early in mid-morning, and then you need an approval by what time?
So, will the pricing will come in 11, we'll get over to town at noon? And, and I don't know if we have your email, Mike, do you? Okay, excellent. We'll send that over, and then we'll set up a Zoom for, does 1 o'clock work for everyone?
Yeah.
Okay, so I'll set up a Zoom, we can have a, a Zoom call quickly then, or just a conference call, either way, but I don't know if you have access to Zoom or not.
Yeah, Zoom would work.
Okay, great. Then, then we'll set that up for 1 o'clock, we'll have a conversation. As long as everything goes as planned, you can sign, and then we'll let the, the winning supplier know, and then we'll move forward.
Been a long time coming.
And just for the record, do you wanna review the pricing here tonight?
Happy to do it, I just didn't-
Yeah, just quickly.
So, so for the opt-out product, if you will, the default product that everyone will be put into, that's a 10% more mass class 1, that came at 14.1, and the price that that would be up against is 16,055 by National Grid. And then they also chose a, a needs product that's the same as basic service, that's actually lower, that someone could opt down to or opt into, it's at 13,731. And then a 38% more mass class 1 product, bring it to 100% renewable. And that would be at 15,5, all of the products and all the choices below National Grid's basic service price from August 1st through January 31st.
And this is for a 24-month term?
That is correct. So there'll be-
Starting in October?
Yep, and this would be-
I mean, September, I'm sorry.
Yeah, starting with September. This would be three basic service changes during that time. Just so everyone's aware.
And it's also, just to clarify or to make sure that we are all on the same page, that the, the, the upper price, it would be either 25% or, or 37, 38%.
Correct.
Right, we did get, we added pricing for both the 25 plus more and the 38, we can look at that tomorrow and make a decision. I, I, I had some questions about how is that gonna stack up against future pricing from National Grid, because their pricing is gonna go down. It looks like it's projected anyway to go down in, in the following six months. So I really would like to make sure that we're still competitive in terms of what National Grid is, what we're offering, and what National Grid is providing for every six, for the next, the following six months.
Is there a lot done on competitiveness of other products that are offering? I mean, like, you can, how do you go get that rate from others right now, right? Obviously, the, the delta to National Grid is what most people care about, because many people aren't jumping around.
Yes.
But in terms of what else is in the market?
This is going to be extremely competitive compared to what's actually in the marketplace, because what you're gonna find in the marketplace is not gonna be mass class 1s, it's gonna be a national wind. You'll be paying less for a, what up, a superior product. In comparison, it's hard to find someone out there on the energy switch website that would be offering a mass class 1 product. And the, and the town will be offering that. Difficult to find this match, is all I'm saying.
May I answer his question? The difference between class 1 RECs is that it is, it is supporting the continuing development of regional renewables versus mass, the, you know, US wind. You know, they, we can get wind prices from, you know, lots of places for a lot cheaper, and it's gonna benefit Texas or Iowa, whatever. But class 1 RECs help mass, help this New England region to develop renewables. That's the push for that.
Okay. It is, you sent, you know, some trended data earlier.
Yeah.
I'm just kinda curious, when I'm looking at sort of the, the chart you sent along, I'm hearing numbers like 14.16, I don't see anything. So what is my, what is my left-hand index representing here?
So that, that's, so this is energy only, right? So this is per night one hour. And it's, you know, in the $60 range, but you're getting a full requirements load following product that we have to, for the, for the price, that's why I was saying, best to only look at the trends, because this is not the full picture of, of what you have baked, right? But this is the price of electricity only.
Right, so-
No capacity, no ancillary, no-
So I'm looking at the data, then, then I wanna see what the volatility was across pricing.
Yep, that's-
So the trend is what I want, so regardless, this is representative of what we might expect, and we said no today, or next week, it's fairly stable.
That is a correct statement, yes. This trend, you know, from a peak two, two years ago, back down where we are today, almost a little bit higher than it was back before the invasion.
Aside from global
Correct.
situations.
It's pretty stable. Agreed, agreed.
I mean, it, it's also useful to think about what National Grid is doing, they're, they have the same information, you know, of, of global markets. And so they're making their decision that they're gonna go at 16-something for the next six months, and we're able to get a, a better price.
It's better price, but also it's more of a focus on renewables.
Yes, 10%.
I just wanna make sure people understand, it's not about just getting a lower price in some respects.
That's right, that's right. Thank you for clarifying that.
I, I have a question. Um, if, you know, it's voted tonight, and Brendan has the power to make the decision tomorrow. If the numbers aren't exactly the same, but they're still lower than National Grid, you know, can Brendan make, you know, educated decision to say yes or no?
Suppose that's up to the motion.
Yeah. I'm just going to, and that's a fantastic question, because I'm going to guarantee you, they're not going to be identical to this pricing.
Yes.
But they're going to be, I think they're going to, you're gonna, we're gonna find they're gonna be in this range.
Well, I think the motion stays reflective of the indicative pricing.
Okay.
Think that.
Okay.
Perfect, so.
It's all on Brendan's shoulders, is what I'm trying to say. That's not true, we have-
I mean, I'd like to have that discussion with the board as well. Like, how much variation are we comfortable with? From these pricing? I mean-
For a penny? Yeah, I mean, I mean, we have a two-cent differential approximately now. Right? If we're still a penny less, I think that's fair.
Yeah, a penny over a megawatt, which would be like a larger-sized home over a month is a lot, so.
Lot. A penny is a lot in the heat. I, I don't expect it to have moved a penny.
All right, well then-
You have plenty of room in there.
Oh yeah, you're good to go.
All right. Any further discussion? If not, I'd entertain a motion.
I move that select board approve the municipal aggregation plan is seen in the indicative pricing presented by the Colonial Power group, and further authorize the chair or vice chair to approve and sign the final pricing, if reflective of the indicative pricing. Sorry?
Reflective and indicative.
All is in favor.
Aye.
Frugus, aye.
Absolutely. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Long time coming.
Good job, Ray. Sure. So, Chapter 90. I sent you guys just a brief rundown of what the plans are for this year. Millville Road and Northbridge Road are scheduled for middle of July. We, sorry, which one, is it the Chapter 90 2025 doc? Don, you know who we look at?
Yeah, we're done.
Yeah, we're done. I know, I sent a lot to you guys. A lot of information hanging on. You guys like information, right?
Me too.
Yeah, so that, the plan right now is, based on the funding that we have, and the amount of complaints that come into the highway department about the condition of the roads, that we're gonna address Northbridge Road and Millville Road, because we have a significant amount of money. And I had Beta come out from the pavement management study and drove around, and I said to them, bang for your buck this year, we have extra money. What are your suggestions? And he picked out where Hartford Ave East, Millville Road, and Northbridge Road. I don't know where we stand with Hartford Ave East right now, but I can't wait to find out. With, I mean, they're scheduling things towards the end of the summer. So.
When you say where we stand in their schedule, where we stand in that?
Where we stand with Hartford Ave East, because we're going back and forth with the whole data regarding that intersection.
Yeah.
Yep. Pavement companies are scheduling to the end of the summer right now, so we need to get these guys on the schedule in any year. I did leave it open. I know you guys have looked at the data, and there's, there is some money left, so we can do preventative maintenance, we can pick other roads, we can hold on to it to do a bigger project next year. And I wanted to have that discussion with you guys to see what your feelings are. Northbridge Road and Millville Road are already at.
Yeah. So, I think that pavement study, the guy is, is plus, as you said, there are, you know, I'm just gonna send to complaints coming from these roads, so to make sense to those, especially. In terms of preventative maintenance, is there a way to actually keep on that, so that maximize return on investment?
That was their original, when they came out, they gave me a three-year plan on what they suggested we fix for roads. That was how they looked at it, it was a mix of different things, and they said, you know, we have this, we're gonna have close to $1 million come July 1st, 2025. Let's do biggest bang for our buck this year. And then going forward, we can look at preventative. There are a number of different solutions. I just, like I know, Mike and I had talked, and I had brought up Gaskell Street. Gaskell Street's probably one of the worst roads in town, and it's a major cut through between George Street and Conings Road. We wanna do that, we can do that. I think, but- The pavement study, I remember one of the longer discussions happening there was him explaining that, what the bang for the buck meant to him, and what it meant to him was how, like, how many cars you were getting over that surface. And if it's a highly trafficked surface, then you're, you know, it's escalating the amount of value you're getting out of it. So you're doing the big roads, that's good. I think, like Brendan said from the pavement study, like, if you could knock off the low-hanging fruit with that billion dollars, that might, as far as the preventative maintenance goes, that, that might go a long way. Because there's like smaller streets that, because the bigger streets are bigger bang for your buck, that never get approached. So I feel like if you're gonna do a couple of big streets, that you should hookend it with some smaller work that might both improve the quality of those neighborhoods, but also get that low-hanging fruit off the list.
So I think we also talked about understanding the traffic pattern. I don't know if you had a chance to talk to Chief Cursey or anyone of both, you know? Joyce. Joyce, good, Joyce killed me. I'm like, who's in talking, you know, Mike and Joyce? And I just wanna say, I think based on Northridge and Millville, we're down about, we're down to 300,000. So that million dollars is, is two-thirds allocated as we want to bear. But it's a, one thing, still love to see the raw data from, from these guys, not just the printed report, because that's gonna allow us to then look at combinations, if you wanted to.
Now, that 300,000, would I say I'm gonna put 300,000 towards another project, not, not until Northbridge and Millville are done, because you may run into issues where it's gonna cost a little more than what they estimated. So we do have that cushion there, but there are other things that we can do with 200,000.
Well, I mean, that's for you to tell us where the cushion is, and, you know, I'd love for you to say, where do you think it should go? You mentioned Gaskell, I said, I was surprised, like, okay, you think that's right, that's right. But I also think that in context of the pavement study, once again, what are the, the different opportunities we have here? Because I think the additional, the ATM approval here, I mean, my intention is to put forward a supplemental funding next year, too. So I'm just hoping this is the first step of a three-year plan to supplement funding on top of what Chapter 90 gets, gets us.
Yeah, I mean, it's knowing that, you create a pattern.
Yeah.
You can follow, yeah.
Yeah, so an extended view over three years, where we can be if you've got, you're probably not gonna have a million next year, but-
Because this is, that, that incorporates, last year, we didn't use much of our Chapter 90 money. So that's at there, and that's why when I send you this current balance of Chapter 90 inch fair share, that's 461,000. That's last year's money.
So you, you, we might look at 275 in that range in Chapter 90 annual, and then-
That's what it is.
Right, and supplemental would be anything more we can allocate, whether it be through ARB or through anything, right?
And I have in here, and that's gonna change, and we may be getting a half. Add another half of that 275.
Plan conservative, if we get bonus, that's cool, you know? But I think you do need to see that three-year split, if, if they're booked out through with the remaining, say, 200,000, you're suggesting you wanna contract that out to folks who're gonna get front-end footings, because they're booking out to the summers.
Imagine what we do, like, we can do certain treatments right in through fall until the roads things start freezing up, and others, like the, the treatments we're doing for Northbridge and Millville, they have to be done in the summer in order for them to set up properly.
How does Culver work on Providence Road, long distance?
I haven't. I haven't put that into it right now. The Culver work on Providence, where it's gonna be post-repair season, right? Yeah, we're not doing repairs on that till next year.
We might need to-
We might need to save three hundred thousand. We need a large spend next year, potentially, right?
Yes, well, at least, and we've got grants going for this one. Potentially. So what I did, since we brought up Providence, I did talk to them today and they had a schedule with their engineering. They're into conceptual designs right now and have, they, they will be to us by September to give us an idea as to what we're looking at for prices.
What was going on there the other day?
They were, they have to do warrants to get down a bedrock to figure out how far down you can get. Kind of part of the engineering process.
Can you contract folks out for next summer before the end of the year? Can you line people up before the end of, before some thirty minutes?
We had, we had people, we did Daniels and Matt Hill, they were lined up the fall before.
Well, that would be, how, what lead time do you need to lock somebody up to get, you know, an, an album?
I don't know.
You can find out, I think this is worth revisiting more broadly because ARPA is the other. We've gotta have that obligated for the end of this calendar year. So if we choose to obligate towards roads, we're gonna have to have somebody contracted or obligated by the end of the year to meet our needs, right? So I, I'd like to kinda maybe suggest we revisit next steps on both sides of these two streets. If that makes sense, if you wanna come back and sort of a more.
Yeah, and this was, this was more, I brought the chapter ninety to you guys because we're a month away from doing these two roads. And we need to bring that to you guys.
And are you good for reimbursement? Cause didn't you say you did a.
So there's, there's the other, I sent a form to you guys that needs to be signed and that is to approve reimbursement for Daniels last year from the state. So it's gonna be signed by you guys and then it gets sent off to the state. They sign it and then they will reimburse us.
So what about these roads? Are these gonna be, are we gonna be signing something reimbursable next year? How did?
I think hopefully by the fall, cause this, this Daniels Road should have been done already and for some reason it fell through the cracks.
So my understanding based on our conversations, this chapter ninety money is not, it's reimbursable money. You might have to put money upfront to get the work done and then you get reimbursed for it.
Right, and we had that discussion about there's a special fund that's set up to do that. We talked about this.
All right, well, so you're, I, I said, talk to Joni, that's what I said. So, but you're good. We have the funds upfront to get, to get this work done and we'll get reimbursed sometime in the future. We're not gonna get jammed.
That I will confirm.
Okay. Do you know if we have to look, sign this or take something?
Your guess is, it was mine, it's the first time I've had to deal with one. Just know that.
I see yours. We can be authorized, nice chair to sign any chapter ninety reimbursement with the roads up there and as written. Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Rugo's aye.
And Elena, so now that I'm back to everything, feel free to tell me to speak out, cause I am a low talker.
She nicely. But you're, you're closest to the microphone, Mike.
And I'm still a low talker, so. Next thing we got on here, surplus equipment. So I'm not a big fan of keeping stuff sitting around if we're not gonna use it anymore. The new truck, the new dump truck thing come in with the plow and a sander. That's why we're using this nineteen ninety eight international on there. I've actually had vehicles, I'm gonna ask if they're putting it up for sale, it was already thought interesting. The other one is the truck that we put up on municipal bid last year, this, the second piece is the sander for that. And then the third one is the damaged hot box, which basically is gonna be on municipal bids because it's not used. But they're sitting around.
And you wanna get rid of them?
Yeah. But in order to get rid of them, they have to be declared surplus by the board.
Okay.
So, that's it?
Yeah, I, any, any discussion on that? I was about to.
Yeah, I, I would move to allow the highway surveyor to put up said equipment as surplus listed as the nineteen eighty eight, or nineteen ninety eight international DT seven zero zero dump truck with plow and sander, the Toral five to the six yard sander and a step hot box.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Rugo's aye.
Last is the letter that I wrote to you guys requesting the one-time payment for the staff and highway. And that's open, obviously open for discussion.
That's something that you wanna move to the record?
If you would like me to.
Yeah.
From the select board for your consideration, for the past year, the staff at Mendon Highway have proven their worth time and time again. They have been called upon to complete tasks that fall within their job description and some tasks that do not. They have completed these tasks by working together in a professional manner and without hesitation. They give one hundred percent, whether it is during their regular business hours or after hours. Some of these tasks include repairing Providence Road, addressing countless potholes, addressing flooding issues, tearing down the carriage house, town hall maintenance and many more. In my opinion, they do an excellent job regardless of what is asked of them. I've reviewed our budget for the remainder of fiscal year twenty four and at this time, I would like to give the employees at Mendon Highway a one-time one thousand dollar payment for going above and beyond over the past year, the total amount of five thousand dollars respectively, Jonathan, of the highways from here.
Just waiting for you to open.
Oh.
Well, this is nice of you. I don't, I don't wanna lay any of this on the board, like we have the responsibility to say it's something that is okay to do. But I just wanna make it clear that, like, you're the one telling us that they deserve this, so we, I believe, have to appreciate your insight here and, and say that, you know, if you're appreciating them in this way, that we have to appreciate them in this way. So, I mean, I would support the pavement if you believe it's in your budget and you think it's appropriate, I, I would back you up on that.
I'd probably not have the exact same opinion.
Okay.
Of the things you listed, John, how many of these are not considered their primary roles? But I mean, the carriage house clearly jumps out of that.
Carriage house, town hall maintenance.
And the town hall maintenance would be like putting in the air conditioner.
Air conditioner. Moving file cabinets. We, we ask things of them that are not within their job description and they do it. They'll never complain without hesitation and I'm, I'm sure I'm missing things in here.
Building picnic tables and meeting them multiple times.
There you go. Just stuff that's not in their, their normal, every, I don't wanna say every day, but their, their job description. They do a lot of it. You know, this is, this is significant precedent. I would probably say if, you know, I've, I've heard conversations where perhaps we should allow department heads more flexibility in managing their, their budget. Sort of going down the lines, Jason, what you're saying.
What I'm thinking.
Yeah.
But I'm also thinking I don't want department heads to manage a budget in a way that is intended to drive, you know? I want them to manage budgets, write size budgets. So I hate to think we're trying to manage a budget so tightly that we have this flexibility. I would rather, I would rather set, this, this is, this is a policy in terms of how the town's gonna operate. I would take a step back from the taxpayer's standpoint and say, well, if you set that budget and put it forth in front of us in May, it's what you need to run the operations. Then how are we having surplus funds to, to give warranted bonuses, right? So it's a.
You're also pulling funds from a line item that was not meant for salary bonuses, right? So now you're using.
Well, no, actually, this came from salary. Sorry, cause they're running, they're, they're.
We've been short-staffed throughout the past fiscal year and that's how we're able to do this.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, like I feel like the, man, so you're right. Like, you're right, but you're, 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 they're also right.
Oh yeah.
So.
No, no, that's why, that's why we get to have fun making these. That's how you make the big bucks.
I think it is a precedent, it's gonna be tough.
So I'm down one guy too. And again, firefighters, police officers, they all do a lot more than is expected. I can tell you, my office, I mean, the firefighters, I've seen them. They just do stuff that's way beyond their job description. I think you have a good highway department, police, one of the fire department, town hall, a lot of people work, but I'm beyond. I've been down a guy, they've stepped in. I mean, I have a huge bucket of money in terms of the town. But again, to your point, trying to be fiscally responsible, I think the money comes within contract negotiations and that's usually how you deal with it. Cause if you set a precedent like that, if, if the fire chief has fifty thousand left over and I may have fifty thousand left over this year. I, my guys are gonna come to me and say, we work hard too, we get something. It's just they all watch each other, we don't have, every department.
And be there, we set the precedent a couple of weeks ago. I think when you're in a circumstance that's different in the sense that a few weeks ago, we set the precedent because there was, there was work that needed to get done statutorily, things like that, that had to get done. And that person stepped up, actually without us formally asking that person to do it, right?
So I, I understand what you're saying and at the time, I think we even touched upon, we've gotta be really. Yeah, and they've talked a lot of times. So when I was the fire chief.
Yeah.
You guys compensated me for that because I'm not a fire chief.
Right.
So if someone else is doing someone else's actual job, you compensate them for it. If you're doing a completely different role that's not your role.
I'm not necessarily against considering how we might implement variable compensation more formally, honestly. Performance compensation, things like that. But I think that's gonna be, not driven out of collective bargaining, but that will impact collective bargaining. Cause that's a whole different pay for performance type of situation that if we were to, you know, go down that path, you know, that's, that's, that would impact how we negotiate contracts with collective bargains. When I think about what they do and they do do a lot of it, I'm not saying they don't do it and appreciate it. I question why we're asking to do this, cause it's not their job. And that speaks more to, when you think about public works, facilities management. Mendon has always been good at finding people to do the right thing, because it had to get done. But I think now we've gotta think about how do we set up Mendon to make sure that people know what their job responsibilities are, they can execute them. They have work-life balance and a compensated fare rate. I understand why this ask is here. I just think we need to look at this in broader context. Cause I, I can't, I can't help but think that this probably was triggered by, and actually it took a few weeks ago. I can't, I can imagine that this will, you get another ask coming at us from other departments as they see this. And we, we gotta be kind of fiscally. We gotta hold, hold reins a little bit and make sure we do this in the thoughtful manner, that's, that's part of it. What do you think, John?
Well, I told you what I think.
Um, yeah.
I understand, I understand what Mike is saying.
I, I feel like we're being rash by doing it, but I feel like it's, we set ourselves up for it and now, now we're dealing with that. And so, how, how do you move it forward? Like, say there is a next step and, you know, and we're acknowledging the extra work, like, how do we move it forward?
Well, we've got a new TA coming on, an organizational change that is coming, you know, in the next six months, most likely. Maybe that's an avenue to have those sort of policy discussions, cause I'd be more in favor as well of making something formal in a policy versus.
Nothing in the personnel policy about bonuses, I just went through the whole thing.
Yeah, exactly. I mean, so I come from, you know, non-internal.
This pool doesn't offer bonuses, so it's something collective.
I would say with, with David sitting in the back there, I mean, I think one of the things we're doing the org design study for.
Yeah, okay.
No, no, I mean, one of the reasons we, just because it's not done, doesn't mean it can't be done, is my point. So I just wanna, no, no, I'm serious, I wanna, you know.
He has a lot of experience, he can tell you.
I just, sorry, in all seriousness, the reason we're doing org design is because maybe we should be rethinking how things are structured, what our staffing looks like, how our compensation, we were going, we're intending to do a compensation study over the next year to understand staffing levels.
Within the collective bargaining, you know, it's, once you get beyond that, you said, if you even try to do bonuses, that's all stuff that comes up in operations and mediations and, and they hold you to it. So you can't just merit-based, I don't know if exists in, you know, the space.
No, they do, they, they can be, they can be structured, yeah.
Very rare, right?
I'm not, I'm not saying we can do it, I'm just saying, why are we dismissing it if it's past practices and it's not that?
Honestly dismiss it, you just need to, like you said, don't jump into it.
Right.
Make a well-thought-out decision on this.
And then determine we probably can't do it, but I'd rather understand why we can or can't do something.
Even to your point, so I was the fire chief, at one point I wasn't compensated for it, then I was compensated for it because I said I don't wanna do it anymore, so the pay because I didn't wanna, I couldn't get any rate on it. And then I took on emergency management.
Apparently it's a ledge.
And I took on emergency management, I've been doing that for eight years and I've, and Mark's been doing it for pennies on the dollar. So we haven't even right-sized the people who are doing positions for free right now and the things above, way above their, their duties, you know? So it's almost like you need to right-size all of it together equally and fairly. You know, I'm not saying that anybody deserves it, I just think the minute, if it's a trickle-down effect in the disposal, once your guys are gonna get something, the other collective bargaining units are gonna come up right away and say, we've been working hard, we want something extra. So that, I'm saying be prepared for that, as a collective bargaining.
Off the hook for other employees. My only concern, and again, not knowing how budgets work and fiscal years, we are coming up to the end of the fiscal year. Tomorrow is basically our last payday for fiscal twenty four, even though we have one week left. But that's not paid until the third of July, so I don't know how that is out.
To keep it going, so.
Eight is a, eight is a period, but I mean.
And again, this will be the first time in collective bargaining units that you've done anything. Because before it was always department heads or individual non-union contracts, which are a little bit different to work with. Once you deal with collective bargaining units. It's a collective bargaining, they all want the same thing.
And I think, I just, my, my concern, and I'm not saying you can't do it. But I think these are employees covered by collective bargaining, if I'm, if I'm correct here. They're, the only, typically in a collective bargaining, the only, the only entity that's legally allowed to bargain wages for employees is the union. Right, so, great intention, but he's here bargaining with you for the union employees that he's supervising. You could do it, but it would have to be bargain, you'd have to do some kind of side letter with the union, get them to sign off and, you know, wrap it up and do it within the context of the collective bargaining.
Yeah.
But to just do it ad hoc outside of the bargaining agreement, I don't think, I don't, not a good, not a good look. Yeah.
Well.
I agree, I agree, we, it would be good to get town council to give, to weigh in on this as we look into possible, like, restructuring or including these, including possible bonuses in the personnel policy. I mean, I think legal counsel would be helpful in this case.
I think the other thing.
I can't tell how much of a lag there is, sorry.
Yeah, I just think that there, the other thing to consider is if you go collective bargaining, it's probably not gonna be something labeled so much as bonus. That's more qualitative, it might need to be labeled sort of as entertainment bonus or something and that would be something that you could put in a policy for us all bargaining units. Potentially something like that. But I mean, it's, that's what longevity is for too as well, right? I mean, you've got a lot of different triggers to, to push money through, to the bargaining units. So, and so we need to kind of look at it more holistically and again, think it through and thank you, David, cause you just took a decision right off the table for us.
Sorry, John.
I apologize, I think it's great that you won.
I think it's great that you wanted to do that, I just, I just don't think this is the right way to do it.
There's no further discussion.
The only thing I want to say is I want to keep it out there for discussion at a later date. I don't want to put it to bed and not revisit it.
I think that's what I was saying, like, like, we have to have. So, yeah, let's.
Maybe the number of things we've got, any, any Chief Cruz has touched on one that we sort of put placeholders out there for financial discussions in the coming months, and it's no more. Yet we add to the list.
Jen, item number ten, uh, this is from the fire chief who actually cannot be here today. It's recommendation to accept a fire truck bid award. Um, just very quickly form that up. So I'm going to read the letters into the record. So if I find it. So this is actually a truck that we had authorized the purchase of with ARBA earlier in the year. Uh, reading the record, uh, it says, "Dear Chair Burmus, a regret to inform you that a vehicle was in attendance meeting scheduled for twenty-sixth due to prior commitment. However, this letter addresses agenda item number ten, fire chief recommendation for a fire truck award. As you may recall, on February twenty-first, twenty-twenty-four, your board approved funding by our opera, the purchase and use ladder truck for a Mendon fire department. Following this, a bid specification for an aerial ladder quint was drafted and posted as per state procurement requirements. On six seventeen twenty-four, engine control administrator, Val Connes and I conducted a bid opening for the ladder. We received a single proposal from Specialty Vehicles Incorporated in plentiful mass for a two thousand one E-one one hundred foot aerial quint. This proposal fully complies with all requirements of the bid specifications and without any exceptions. Therefore, I strongly recommend that the board accept this proposal from Specialty Vehicles Incorporated. Thank you for your time and consideration. I'm always available to discuss further this matter and address any concerns that you may have. Signed, Chief Bagman."
Any discussion?
Uh, we got a chance to see it on Wednesday.
We did.
It was awesome. It's cool to have a ladder truck in town. Kind of really increased our capability, yeah. It's always, always like a little kid on fire trucks. Um, so anyway, yeah, I would, um, move to award a bid for the purchase of a new fire truck to Specialty Vehicles Incorporated in the amount of eighty thousand dollars as recommended by the fire chief.
Second, all those in favor?
I.
Who goes, "I"?
All right. Moving on, I'd like to invite, uh, David Copeland to the best, talk about the work of the S E N S R project update.
Hopefully you enjoyed our meeting so far.
I, I had a new meeting. You do some great things, you know, this community aggregation, great program. Uh, patient management system plays that strong coverage stuff. Uh, and, uh, important to do. Um, so, um, I'm here really tonight to listen to you more than to talk. So, but I, I will give you an update on what we've been doing. Uh, working with Jen here to schedule appointments. I met with about five or six department heads today, um, here. And we had some interesting talks. I'm coming back in the morning and we'll be, uh, meeting with, I'm not sure how many tomorrow.
I think you have five tomorrow, and then we have a couple of people that were unavailable, so we'll be setting those up.
We'll do, we'll do, we'll do those remotely, right? So, um, about a dozen, I think, is what we're doing. Um, after we, after we, uh, after we get through those interviews, um, take some time to reflect on what information we have, um, and then come back to you and, um, think of, I want to think about how we want to proceed with the next meeting, right? What, how we want to structure this in the form of a workshop or however, however we want to do it. We'll pick around some ideas after, after I hear from everybody. Um, and start fleshing out some ideas. But tonight I really wanted to hear, you know, get it directly from you, your expectations about what you, what you want me to do here. Um, what, not what you want me to do, but what, what outcomes are you looking for? Um, in this report. There's, um, we could do a wide-ranging study, um, but I don't think anybody just wants us to sit down and write another report and put it in the file cabinet over there again. So, you know, hopefully we'll have an interactive process where we can come up with the things that you feel are implementable in your most interest in doing it over a certain period of time. Because I think there's going to, there are, there is, there are a lot of opportunities here to make, um, positive changes. So at the last meeting, um, we didn't really talk about it a lot. So it's like, take a few minutes and hear who you, what your expectations are. You want to say?
Sure.
So when we first talked on the phone, I think, um, going back to what I've said earlier is just because we've done things a certain way, doesn't mean that's the only way it can be done, right? So by talking to all the folks you're talking to, I would, I would hope we have some sense of a squad analysis from their perspective, right? So. And, um, what I hope you'll bring and Paulson will bring is examples or ideas that are being included in other municipalities that might be a fit, might be an idea. As you know, we're in a state of flux, we've got a new TA starting, yay. New, new executive admin, our financial team is in flux, right? So my thing about that, the example would be, well, you know, we always say we need treasurer collector. When I looked at it, you know, I said, oh, wait a minute, you can have a treasurer and a collector, right? Or you got a treasurer collector. We currently have a finance director treasurer collector, right? So what are the different ways financial offices can be structured in the state? What can you bring to us? So we don't know what we don't know.
Right.
But in terms of objectives, what I will understand or establishes things like succession planning throughout the operation, management span of control, to understand what's the right fit. So for instance, I think the, the annexed part is that direct management per se oversight, I think they're well, I bring force to the TA, our conservation agent force to the TA. Is there a better way to structure to make sure that the folks out there doing the work are getting proper support? Create development standpoint, you know, professional development, et cetera. You know, so one of the best practices we may or may not be doing, we brought to the table and then collectively, we walk away with an idea, a directionally of how we think, we should think about structuring the town operations. That's what I'm looking for.
All right, so I'm next. I think that there's two things I'm interested in, um, like, of course I'm interested in the way that we do the town, but personally, I feel like the biggest like hurdle for our organization is that the, the actual organizational change management, not the decision to do the work, but to implement it and then do it in a way that's not going to massively, I mean, it's a massive impact, but not have it such a punch to the gut to the staff. So I'm not sure exactly how we step off our pedestal to do that. Do you understand? Like, that's my biggest concern is that just the position puts you up there, whether you want to be there or not. So when we make decisions and then they're implemented by the department heads, how is that, how is that change management happening in a smooth way that makes everybody feel comfortable? I don't know what the comfortable part is, right? Um, and I'm hoping that you're getting that out of the interview. So this is like, that's the one thing for me is, I felt like the board has done a good job and our transitional staff has done a really good job of helping move the culture in a positive direction. How long is that? So that's, that's where, that's what I'm thinking there. The second thing is like, like, we could make some departments like really accelerate while we let other ones stagnate. It would be super easy to do because there are some more interesting parts of the government, right, than others. And some have much more direct public impact as well. I, I want to make sure that doesn't happen. Like, it's important that the public face of the government looks like it's improving and doing, but like, I understand the optics portion of our change, but I, I also like, don't want anybody left behind in that improvement. It does, I don't really, to me, it doesn't matter how small your job function is in the government, like, if we're not working to improve that, then we're definitely leaving you behind. Like, I know that's the case. So those are my two big things, organizational change, momentum behind, that's what I.
So I want to add a little bit to what I, Jason's going on, with everybody since I have a new TA. Uh, so I personally would like to get them involved as soon as possible so they can start seeing what's going on, uh, what the direction is and work, kind of close together the plan, set them up for success. My feedback.
Elena?
So, uh, I mean, so, yeah, I, I, you know, I agree with all those points. I think, um, we have questions related also to just like admins, for example, like whether we, I, I don't know if that's come up, if I've missed that, but, um, we have a number of like administrative positions and it's, uh, not clear whether some of them could be consolidated or distributed in some different way. So it's, it's a lot of like, who's, who's doing what work and who should be doing what work and how many positions should there be? Um, and I think this, you know, relates to some of what Mike was saying, that, you know, we, we've had these positions and, but we don't know necessarily whether they're the right positions for the work that needs to be done.
Okay. I think adding onto that too is there are positions we don't have that maybe we should. Right, so the conservation agent filling that and learning what the possibilities are in that role, you know, that was like an eye-opener, you know? So he said, yeah, we should make sure that role gets filled. But it is for sure, there are other things out there that we're not aware of, you know?
It sounded like also, I'm going to go all the way back to your conversation earlier about like, why, why are we asking people to do these jobs? It seems like we also don't have a firm grip on like, all the work that people are doing. Not the work that we've told them, somebody's told them to do. All the work that they are doing, um, expectations are way out of whack there. Some people are doing clearly a lot of work, um, then maybe they feel like they have to and they actually don't.
I think we need clearer job descriptions, which.
Yeah.
One of the things I've noticed in my tenure here is that there are, or there are very few are the ones that we do have are so old that, you know, they were words like.
We've got a nice set of job descriptions in the Collins Center, three fifteen. I'm wondering if we might dig those up. I didn't, you know.
They didn't get thrown away? They're in the file.
No, I mean, no, they, they came with, I'm happy, they came with a compensation study and if we could round those out just in combination, to your point, that'd be great. I'm sure we have them on a, yeah, I'm sure we have them on a hot drive somewhere that I can find, if you can.
Yeah, you should stop running the government by insinuation, I think is, right? Like, I think that's the bottom line. It's like we're moving from small to like, little, small to medium, we moved at some point in time without looking. And now we're sort of, you know, growing up medium to large and now we have, like, we just have to, there's no choice but to look. Um, and that's the point we're at, right? And we just need help with that transition.
And this is the first step. So as we, from the time we started talking about this particular effort, it became apparently clear that we should, we need to revisit our compensation. So compensation studies, staffing study, job descriptions, that's a whole separate ball of work. We're also probably going to hopefully be a fast follower to this at some point. That, um, it's the next logical step. Once we understand what, what we think we should do, what we're missing, if we don't have, how we're structured, well, how are we competitively, how are we competitive in the marketplace? Inside, obviously we are, outside, obviously we're not, I know that. But the idea is, and then what can we afford, right? But I think that's, that's a, that's a separate study effort, but it's a logical next step to what we're talking about here. So, so I, I think one thing we should do before we go too far is look at, there are, there are certain foundational things that every town ought to have in place, you know, for you start making decisions about switching this around, doing that, doing this differently. Do you have a coherent, comprehensive set of financial policies? Do you have a coherent, comprehensive set of, uh, HR policies? Do you have job descriptions? Um, there, there's a number of things that are just basic foundational. Do you have an operating plan? You, I can say operating plan, I mean, you know, sometimes I have a charter, you don't have a charter. Uh, in, in absence of a charter, the, the next best thing to be a really, while we're in bylaw, that, that lays these things out, like, these are, this is the department, this department and this is what they're supposed to do. Um, tremendous detail, but laying out what the authority is, who's in charge. Um, and so there's those kind of what I would call foundational documents, some kind of plan, some kind of, uh, HR, a good set of policies, HR and financial are the two biggest ones. Um, capital planning, how's your capital planning going? Do you, um, how do you finance your capital needs? Um, and so forth. Uh, so those, those kind of foundational things. And then I think maybe we look at, we put, um, your departments into sort of functional buckets and say, his public safety, his public works, his finance, his, uh, the community services, if you will, and look at how they operate. Um, one of the things that came up today a lot was collaboration. You know, no, no town can be very successful without, uh, collaboration across departments, especially small towns. Um, because you just don't have the financial resources to put a person in every spot to do everything. Um, so I think, I think if that, if that sounds fair to you, I think that's. When you think about the financial policy, the things that may or may not be in place, I mean, that calls to Jason's point, when we execute implementation, that might be the first thing is to get those foundational places. But if I'm thinking about aspirationally what we want our management structure, department structure to look like, I think we can paint that picture based on best practices. And then we can talk, to your point on, well, how do we execute implementation and make sure changing angle is, is effective and nobody gets left behind? So it's on the, on the side of, well, in my mind, we're creating the vision of where we need to get here, and then start.
Agreement, right? Yeah, we, I think one of the things we might have learned this year is that like you, you can't, you can't go out and create these grandiose policies without filling in the gaps that came before them, um, because there's just too many questions. So, yeah, if we could have a strategy and vision for the organization of our town, the filling in the blanks, we've got all these experts, a lot of them are in this room, but we've got all these experts that can help us with that. I don't, and I don't, doing work has never been anybody's problem here at the time. Everybody's willing, right? It's, it's just sort of like, yeah, but what are you, where are you aiming for?
And if you guys can help with our communication, maybe at some point, we just need to kind of share that vision with the town, especially if we're ever thinking about things that might require increased funding, we want to make sure it's, we're pretty clear as to where we're going, right? And I think to your point on collaboration, I think on slot, I mean, what, what I just heard you say is that lack of collab, collaboration is actually a threat. It is, right? So I mean, that's where I'm thinking, what you're hearing, hopefully you can put into those four quadrants to understand where we have to shore up, what, and how, and then how do we do it? We walk away with sort of an idea of where we're going, better than an idea.
I think, I didn't want to, I didn't want to, I wasn't insinuating that there wasn't collaboration.
I didn't wanna, I didn't wanna, I wasn't insinuating that there wasn't collaboration. Other, or I think there's a great, there's actually a lot of collaboration going on. More ad hoc. Versus struc- versus structural, uh, or, um, you know, it might then, two departments might work together on something this year, but they don't do it next year.
That's an example, that's a great example. If you're facilitating this workshop, then you, that was on, you know, the documents were giving. I would want facilitation discussion to be. What are the ways that we actually institutionalize collaboration? And you might say, well, we've seen it done this way in town, municipality, I don't give those names. And what they did is they kind of pulled, you know, um, the COA under the Board of Health together in a single umbrella, because there's natural synergies between these two things, right? All right, okay. But that's the conversation I hope when we get together, you can kind of bring information together and then we can talk about what are the different opportunities we have moving forward.
Absolutely. Yeah, those are the kinds of things that are happening in other towns successfully. You know, there's lots of models out there we could certainly bring to the table, absolutely.
That was just an example.
I've got Amy around the hotline.
Amy and I had a nice chat today.
You bring up some interesting points. I think the key thing with your experience, experience, you don't have to do a lot of research and a lot of studying amongst yourselves because we're trying to find ourselves. You should be able to bring to us best practices, best models, organizational structure in like-sized communities within Massachusetts. So that we don't do a lot of three months worth of studying, something you already know. And I think that's the vision we're gonna see from you. And then continue to plug those holes in.
So you had also asked how you wanna run, like, how you wanna come back and, and run that discussion?
Yeah, we could, um, I wanna give that some thought and turn it again before. And I think, I don't think it should happen, uh, certainly, but I think we can administer a starting one.
I keep creeping a tour in my mind.
I assume I'll be back to get on his schedule and we can, we can discuss how to put that together. I don't know how soon we'll be able to do that, in summer and everything. We'll get on your schedule as soon as we can. Yeah, no, I mean, the best practice, uh, piece of it is, is, you know, almost goes without saying. And I just wanted to say again, being visionary, being visionary is always been one of my strong suits. So I can certainly help to put together a vision. But visions have, can, have to be supported, right? And they have to be lived in, uh, policy procedures that are best practice, right? And if you're not following best practice, then your vision can fall flat. So it works, it goes to get.
Absolutely.
Putting the vision set in tone for the best practices, so you don't build a practice that doesn't meet the vision. That's my opinion.
True. Yeah, and the policies are the foundation of any, um, operational structure you put in place. You know, you need that codified in a way that there's a pressure about, you know, roles, responsibilities, et cetera. Policies around engagement even, you know, financial policies, we have a draft. I know we, that was one of the things that I think we, uh, were reviewing. In the last, since, since you're in for highway, we've put a, we structured a capital working group that some of us are on and, um, so we got the basis starting there. So at least understand what you're saying, building it up. But also wanna make sure we understand where we're going, more importantly, by next budget, I would understand structurally what we're thinking in. Do, do we need different positions, new positions? Marry that with compensation strategy and talking about, and talking about how that all fits together. To what, you know, we talked about a little bit earlier, which John brought to us. Besides in that discussion.
I think we also all want this to outlive us, us, right? Like, this shouldn't also be depend, like, a lot of this in the past has been dependent on the board's actions. And, um, this, the government really needs to be able to run independent of the political arm and it's really tied quite tightly at the moment.
And David, that, that could be that based on what you're hearing, you might come back and say, you, you really need to do a charter. To achieve, say, what Jason just laid out, then it should go down the path of a charter. And we might consider that.
Mike's speaking, so.
I certainly, it's a, it's certainly a best practice to have a system in place that is not dependent on who the individuals are on the board, right? That it, it, it lives beyond your tenure on the board and the next, and it's not so easy for the next board to change it.
Well, so like, I'm saying that we also understand that three years or two years from now or whatever, and, and this board does change, that like, part of our best practice analysis needs to be like, what's the best practice to make sure that the things that we're working on as individual board members continue on or are handed off? Or are in an appropriate space that can continue in hand? You know what I'm saying? Like, we don't wanna set ourselves up for value right from the beginning just because, you know, I might not last two more years because I move out of town for a job or whatever happens. We should be thinking about that in advance, whereas, but we have longer term employees and staff in the town that we, you know, expect will be here for a longer duration than the political staff. And so like that, I don't feel like we've ever thoroughly accounted for all of that. And so if that's a charter, if that's the explanation.
Charter is a structure, I think you can bring up good points, but a charter is probably, is probably the best way to do it. You know, it's the most durable.
But I think sort of what I'm hearing too is like boards and committees, right? The, the select board policy document, I'm here thinking we wanna add into that, you know what I mean? Then best practice, how do individuals actually execute and practice those things, right? You can build that into your charter, right, Dave? I mean, you build all that into your charter. We're a bylaw community, so we just, we believe in bylaws. So to your point, Jason, what you do may not live on. I mean, without a charter and usually what they said a pretend review. That's how, that's how you put it. You put that in stone. I mean, I've been here for decades and I've seen so many changes. I mean, there was nothing as even close to the same when I started here. I mean, I was maybe taking to a lower level where say Brendan's been working on the board's financial policy document. If Brendan were to get him to drop the move tomorrow, how do we ensure that that work continues, right?
Exactly, that's exactly what I'm talking about. Like, I'm also working on some stuff, you're working on stuff, everybody is. Like, that's how the board works, right? Like, we're spreading out the work, um, to make sure that things get done for the town. Um, and, you know, trying to accommodate that in a nice, fair way, in a public meeting way, right? And we bring that back here when, when we need to. That, you know, well, maybe the TA helps us out with that, but if we had a policy or a procedure or a plan, when we started these projects, we would register our project. We would find a secondary contact, whatever the best practices are.
Do you do a, a, any formal goal setting for the board?
Yeah, we did that this, this year and it was pretty successful. And that's where a lot of this work came out of, the capital plan and policy documents, yeah.
So you have a, you have a document that has your goals and stuff.
We have a flip chart.
Flip chart. Well, that, that's a start, right? And certainly, you know, one of the things that helps with that is certainly continuity, uh, in your appointed positions. And, um, having the right policies in place and structure in place and compensation in place that builds some longevity for people in positions in, 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 as department heads and as town administrator, how, will, will help you help those things that you're working on live after currently. Is that all you have, right? Do you get what you needed? I think I, I think I have, I think I have enough and, um, continue tomorrow and, um, I'll, I'll, I'll wait till July 9th to call the, the.
You can get an email from me tomorrow.
I do appreciate you coming out. Thank you.
So Chief, I'd like to invite you on to, uh, agenda item number 12, which discusses about to accept a local comprehensive emergency management plan.
Uh, it's straightforward, it's a state plan, you can have, we update it every two years. I think you can mail it to you too. So we just need authorization from both the chair or vice chair to sign it. Move on like business as usual.
Uh, I move to accept the local comprehensive emergency management plan as amended.
Second, can you delegate authority to sign to?
Then I would also delegate authority to the vice chair to sign said amended.
And I will second that amended motion.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Aye.
That's all I wanted to give in.
No problem. And we appreciate you doing that for free. Someone will do it, I think that's right.
All right, so moving on to agenda item number 13.
We've got, uh, we've got Jack, we've got Nick, we've got Ron and Mees, we've got Corms. I think I'm meeting at.
Uh, since we last met a few weeks ago in our committee, that's what I'm trying. How do you recommend some design on current that we'd like to pursue? And to do that, we're looking to the committee to discuss the possibility of funding up to a maximum expenditure to engage the architect, to take some of the design considerations that were working on our committee and come up with a proposal. And also our committee were discussing to get this fair for the November election. So there's some time, time urgency behind this. I have critical dates here, we need to go through that. But first, I think the funding, we have a about to exceed email memorandum from the architect, about to exceed $10,000. I think I'd like to try to hold it to less than that. But I'd like to have request the funds, $10,000 to engage the architect to look at the region, study and redesign.
And like, what's the output? Like, are they gonna draw it up? Or like, how extensive of the work are they gonna do? Are they just gonna say a verbal change or?
No, no, it's gonna be, it'll be drawn up, redesigned. Reducing the footprint is one of our goals. Be able to compensate for a reduced expense to the town. It's not gonna go away, but we're gonna cut it. We'll also add things that'll follow up and be visible what that means. We're looking at other constructive ways of potentially not building out the complete building we began with. And she had a few ideas where we may look at, collectively, look at other ways to add on to the build, add functionality to the building later, like finish, it's been on, at a later date. Look at approaching the garage at the end of the year. So you're not burdening that part of the project with all the escalators, contingency fees and all the other things that, if you remember, when I first proposed it, $1.2 million of construction plus escal- escalations on inflation is gonna happen to us. But I mean, there's other ways, but we're trying to come back to those people, the builders, where they reduce costs. We do need a senior center, there's no question about it. We're out of room, we still have the need, so that's our primary goal. But also try to enable community center capabilities as well. We'll probably come back also on a design that shows in the five to 10 year period if we need to expand or we could expand on the footprint that we know of today, not mine for it. And expanding on that, we won't have a cost for it, but we'll know that we can expand out.
Yeah, if, if the building is designed in a way that it can be expanded, I think one of the things, right, that was learned from the town hall here was that like, you know, they, they knew expansion that they had to on that, but it really wasn't appropriate for buildings, you know, for, and built over well. I was trying to leave.
That's what my first ask is, your approval and finding funds to go ahead with the architect? And then the other question would be, your approval to move forward in the November election timeframe? I think we need your approval, I'm assuming that.
Yeah, at some point you need our approval.
Because you will also need to approve the ballot question.
So I mean, last time we talked, I think the board all agreed, the need is still there. So I think on the, the, the building committee side, there was at least three primary thing, empty that you heard. Costs too much, people may not have liked the location and there are alternative areas people wanna focus on, and the senior center. So one of those things, I think, that here is to address at least costs, certainly I'm going to say. I think the location is, the committee probably said it's still firm where it is, but we should not ignore what the vote necessarily passed along. So we need to redesign to get those new costs that's in, in asking the cost. Do you have, do you have a target, like, when you're approaching the architect?
We've had, we've discovered, we're looking around, we're at 10.
About 10.
About 10 change.
Which he says it's probably losing a third of the building. That's his simple equation on that.
Which means there's gonna be cuts, so people understand what I, it's not like we could have done this smaller, cut itself. Because the need is so strong, you know?
The basic fundamental need is today.
Oh, definitely.
And so two years from now.
Yeah, but so we're not cutting out any, like, are we, you're not thinking about cutting emergency management? Hopefully, you're not thinking about cutting pantry?
Well, we look at those considerations, we're trying to figure out.
I mean, there are some like more pieces, that's what this study is gonna get us. This study is gonna give us an analysis and then we decide, hey, where are the, where do we make the cuts? Here's our options, you know, it's like a home improvement show, you can, you can pick two, you can't have three.
Amy feels strongly and, um, I'm just talking because I feel stronger as well about keeping the food pantry, food pantry.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying as well.
We are, we are, people forget, we're not just a senior center. We are a community-based center and we service all of the communities, all of the people in town. And I know Amy is adamant about that and I am also that we have got to keep that.
Yeah, I think everybody's in line with that. Like, I remember like the separate, you know, entrance and the accessible location, et cetera, et cetera, the more space. I, that's like one of the primary things that needs to be.
But, but I think the reality may be, the food pantry may be there, but it's might be small, it might be different than originally designed to accommodate. So there are gonna be changes that, I mean, it could be like it is now, an unfinished base.
It's a bit unfinished, but.
So from, from a planning standpoint, I think Amy looked at her budget, but without a town meeting vote, she can't remove some of the monies of different projects that are out there.
Right, there's money left over from windows. And I think you'll probably end up taping that.
Yeah, as soon as I heard that, I said, we're gonna need to move those back to the.
Yeah, and that's okay, that's all right.
Yeah, no, no.
You need windows here.
But given the fact that where we heard it in terms of fiscal year and the thought was, I had mentioned we should probably look to take on reserves, see if we can allocate funds there before year end, so that they can make the commitment to the architect. That's why we asked, thanks to you to join us in that.
There's also gonna be an article in both the senior scene and in the local paper. I'm asking the people to give us their opinions, to join the committee. We're really extending it that, making the point that the town's people's opinion are very important to us. We thought we did a good job on that, but apparently we did not. But the vote was very close, 50% votes.
It's very close. The other part about getting it tied up to a presidential election is you might get a better turnout, more representative to the town.
We don't wanna spend the extra money either in getting yourself a separate batch.
It's more costly, you see.
And we need time.
I think it's the best of both worlds, you're getting built in better turnout because other issues on there.
If we're going down that path too, in our art July meeting, we're probably gonna have a vote to make sure we improve article language and ballot language.
Yeah, according to our schedule, July 17th meeting, you'd have to vote on the article.
Cause it's getting state by the first meeting.
Ellen indicated that she can release it the day after.
On the ballot question, on the, on the ballot question, article will be due until later on.
Yeah, article will be due, but Ellen's indicated she can release it the day after to meet the deadline of August 7th, which has to be a secondary instinct. They will incorporate it on the state ballot. Need some kind of documentation out there explaining what it is. One of our town folks last, wouldn't have information out to the voters on what are you asking really? It's a generic legal talk question.
The ballot doesn't have an amount on it, the ballot's always just the offer, I still have the actual box, not an amount. So I don't think there's anything wrong, maybe we should talk to Karis about it, cause Phil has some different, um, he's got some different opinions for people, but I, I don't know why the town couldn't release what that actual number is. It's all public record anyways, so if we get that out ahead of time, this is what that number represents. Maybe you can show them what the article is, that's gonna be on the special town meeting. Yeah, we just need to coordinate the timing, because the ballots in the, the town meeting versus the election might be actually reversed, timing.
I'm assuming, I'm assuming. Uh, the early voting starts 10/19, so we need a lot of time, and we have to get information out to the early ballots that go out early October, for the mail-in ballots.
And any information we're talking about too, is, you know how you get the state pamphlets for every question on the ballot, these pros and cons type of thing, but do something simple to.
This, this is saying this, if you're opposed, it means this, if you're for it.
So we're not giving the opinion, you're talking what it means.
Yeah, that's it, you just talk.
Not opinion, it's not vote for the state.
That's public record anyway, so you should be able to provide it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, that makes sense to me.
What's the thincom think?
Uh, I mean, so, my personal opinion is, I, I think we should do this, I think, uh, I don't think, the need is not cut away, uh, I think based off of what we've heard and all the things we discussed, I support using FinCom reserves for it. I'm interested here with the rest of the board thinks, but, um, I do believe, I mean, the target seems appropriate. I'm wondering how much the continued weight and inflation is actually going to impact.
It'll go up.
And the, and the final estimate, you know, and she was explaining, month to month, there's a increase.
It's not like 100,000.
If you look, if it's a half a year delay, just, we're saying five to six percent, I assume five to eighty percent inflation. And that's not the, and that's not the published federal inflation, that's.
So those are also gonna be cuts out of it, so it's.
Right, retaining more here too, one of the four. And that's the driver for November versus when you tell May, when the. Get it done.
Yeah, I feel like you gotta, you gotta try again. Waste a lot too.
Yeah, I mean, one of the other questions is, would, has there, is there any consideration of going back for the same amount, but adding more value to the building, right? Are we able to get more out of it to get more citizen approval and buy in?
There's been consideration committee, yeah, my original opinion was we were so close, we should go for it again. But I've been here for a long time, a lot of years, and I watched the school boards go through, coming back a little bit less. Police, police station coming back for less. It seems like it takes more than one time to get through the town. And I think our alternative to that is the fact that we can articulate expansion capabilities, so that the town may have an appetite for more community services, or more community activities beyond what we can give them for our use block. There's a way to do it, but of course, it'll cost you more, there's the inflation effect, because you don't cost the higher.
Yep.
But, we're looking at future, but not as far as we were before.
Yeah, I think putting together Plan Two is, is a good view, I totally agree that, um, I, I agree, I'm asking the question just to ask it, and do you believe coming back with a lower number is probably the best thing to do? You will get people if you came back, especially with a higher number, if you came back with the same, with the same number, uh, you will probably get people who wouldn't have decided to spite. So, yeah.
But this timeframe, you may not lose as much with inflation, because when the building was approved in May, we would've been looking to hire OPM, and then architect design, that's a six-month process, we probably wouldn't have started construction until the spring. So if this gets approved in November, we can fast-track those two, and probably be, be doing it summer.
You're gonna.
And it's great and stuff.
Go back to town meeting.
You know?
Yeah, so.
That'll be the town.
There's a special town meeting.
Okay.
So, so we may not lose as much with this window, but if we go May, we're definitely losing.
You'll lose four, I know.
It's getting pretty dark outside, I just saw that.
Is that why I was like last?
Yeah, well, let's deal with it before, and then we lose.
Before the fire, we need some voting.
I guess any, anybody else on the FinCom, uh, Jack here, Cameron, so, Ron, Nick?
Uh, this is Nick, um, yeah, um, so I have a, a concern around this, and it, it has to do with pulling money out of the reserve fund. And, and the reserve fund is, is typically used for extraordinary or unforeseen expenditures, and I'm not sure if this qualifies under that. And this is not to say that I'm not, haven't been in favor of the senior center, I just don't believe that the reserve fund is set aside for this type of expense.
Well, we will be returning some monies, it's about eight thousand, isn't it?
Yes.
I think it's in the neighborhood of eight thousand, we will be returning. The senior center, Amy is very, very fiscally responsible, and I think we return money every year, believe it or not, I think we do.
I, I can believe the numbers close to seven thousand, change.
I mean, I would say it is imperative, because we have to transfer money anytime soon, and this money rolls over in free cash in four days. And, and beyond that, there's no way to get money for projects, we want to move this in November. So I don't know how else we would transfer money, because it's not budgeted next year.
We, we would probably need another special town meeting.
Right.
So, and scheduling, scheduling, and if we wanted to. Scheduling another special town meeting would be costly.
And it's still time, you need the, the timeline to work, so we can still put us months out.
I don't know if that. Yeah, I feel like that's not that great to spend this money, I mean, you know what I'm saying, like, I feel like this is the most efficient way to spend this money at this moment. Otherwise, you're gonna, we're gonna have to come back and spend an extra 20K or whatever to do the same thing.
I agree, I think overall, from a, what it costs the town to go through this process, that, uh, somebody please chime in if you don't agree that we should go back again, right? But if you are of the opinion that we should go back again, this is the most cost-effective way for the town to do so in the most expedient manner to save the town as much money as physically possible. So, while I agree this is not a totally extenuating circumstance in terms of being an emergency, if we believe that this is a necessity for the town, this is the most cost-effective way to do so.
And be responsible to the citizens we provide services to.
Correct.
Conable to money.
Jack, Ron?
Yeah, um, uh, um, I, uh, I, I certainly see the, uh, Nick, uh, next point, and, uh, and understand it, I guess the countervailing argument is that we're talking about, um, uh, perhaps obtaining a level of efficiency here, and, um, we're in a bit of a time bind, um, for all the reasons that have been described, so it may end up the convening of a special town meeting for the allocation itself, there are gonna be costs associated with that. Uh, I, I'm just kinda wondering out loud here, for the sort of $10,000 that is gonna take to rejigger the, the design, do you have some idea of how far, how deep the architect is already into this for? I mean, how much has been expended thus far, um, for the architectural services?
We spent, uh, 20,000 for the architect, and the engineering, and the engineering was another company that did the site preparation for, you know, it's happened. So I think we're, 20,000 dollars is what we spent so far for the, 20 for the architect so far. Yeah, up to, up to. And he's done more than his 20,000 dollars worth of work containing a system.
Yeah, um, I, I'm, I'm just sort of, uh, just sort of like wondering out loud here on, you know, um, that, do we, you know, co- coming at a redesign, you know, um, if we need to be spending, you know, roughly 50% of the, of what has already been expended for redesign, um, is, is that, is that really realistic here? I mean, in the sense of, you know, is there, is there a way to just, uh, you know, get to a smaller footprint on, on a, on a, on even a less expensive basis? I'm, I'm just, I'm just wondering about the justification for a 50% expense. Is this because it's basically have to redesign the entire building all over again, and?
Well, some of the, some of the primary reasons are that the senior center was on the first floor, on one floor completely, and functionally downstairs was mostly community center, food pantry, and other areas. We're taking the building and shrinking it this way, so functions of the senior center will be on both floors, and the back end of the building would be used for community purposes, the food center. So we are in architecture redesigning the building. To do the proper estimation, we do need to take it to detail. There's a whole firm that he goes out to, P C, I forgot the name of the abbreviation, there's a whole firm that has a set cost to do, here's what all your constructional pieces and your heat loads, your air conditioning loads for this size footprint.
And they're not gonna look at us a redesign, it's gonna get a data, run their numbers.
There's a data you pass it back, it's just a.
Yeah, this is more than just, uh, let's use, you know, contractor-grade stuff instead of nicer stuff, right? This is a complete restructure, or restructural design, so the minute you change something about, the whole thing needs to be reengineered, right?
Yeah.
Well, uh.
And I, I won't push, I won't push him to not spend that money, I believe he hasn't, that much, but his email indicated it could be up to, he's indicated he tried to do less than that. And he, you know, I think, I don't wanna go into something, come back and say I need another two, right?
Then we say no.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would too.
Yeah. Uh, I, I, I wanna, I wanna, I wanna stay in my lane here, obviously, as a member of the FinCom, but I, I just ask a follow-on question if I might. And that is, if, if the, if, if, if the, if the proposal, at least initially, um, was designed, and I think it was designed to meet the, meet the town needs today, and to meet them into the future, why not just take another run at the current design? Why, why are we like rejiggering the thing? Why not take another run at it, and quite frankly, if, if it has the support, uh, of, of the town on a second run, and the vote, people come out for the vote on a second run, then we have our answer. I'm just kinda wondering why we're even contemplating, you know, pairing it back? Because pairing it back isn't gonna fix the location issue, if that's the issue.
Yeah, and if we look at a location, there's more cost there, it's a bigger, it's a bigger delta. But, I don't know, I mean, the, the committee's been split on that, I mean, people voiced, why do it, why do it smaller? Because it's, but then on the other side of the coin is practical experience amended. We're trying to take it beyond the normal, typically amended, I don't want, I've been here for a while. We build it for just in time and just enough for today, and we outgrew it by the time we moved into it. The redesign will try to at least make it viable for another five to 10 years, five to 10 years afterwards, so expansion, we won't have to worry about for a while.
And also, Jack, I, I would say that, and Phil's right, we just met last night, and some people said, we based that 12 million on the needs, this is what Amy needs to run the center. But then, there were other people who said, we have to listen to the townspeople, they have spoken, and one of their main concerns was the cost. And so, we're trying to do due diligence, and we're trying to make an effort to appeal to those people. So, I suppose we'd rather have some.
Cause we waste time, too, we do the same exact thing again, which is the definition of insanity, doing it over and over, expecting a different result if we do it again.
Advances, no, we possibly have to offer them again.
Well, yeah, well, well, with, with, yeah, with all due respect, I mean, what, what was represented was, is that there's a need because a segment of the population that is going to, you know, quite frankly, benefit primarily from this, is, you know, uh, frankly, didn't get the vote out here. I mean, that, that's what happened, the vote didn't arrive. So like.
I have to take a little bit of offense at that, because actually, the committee worked very hard, it's just that we didn't have a lot of members of the committee, and, um.
If you look historically at our elections, for a non, for a non-controversial election, there was probably the most people that ever came out, I mean, for something that none, there was no contested races, you know, they were all nothing but rightists.
They all came out to vote for this.
Yeah.
Like, it was probably double the size I expected, because this ballot question was on, this question was on.
We don't get 12, 1300 people vote.
No, we get six.
Sometimes we actually get six, too.
We drove the vote.
Six hundred is what I'm saying, yeah.
We did drive the vote numbers high, uh, and I think we probably missed a few people along the way, but I don't want a chance that again.
I think there are also people who didn't totally understand the financing piece of it, I think there's some, I think there is some better discussion. There were neighbors that I had that didn't understand some of the debt capacity and how this relates back to operational debt versus capital debt. I think there is a conversation we could have there, maybe that would help sway 53 people, I don't know, um.
But you made a point, you made a point earlier, and it's going to happen, is that for people saying, back with the same number, you're gonna get people, they're gonna vote no, just out of spite, doesn't make any sense.
And, and we just, we have way, we weigh the options.
Exactly.
We're trying to.
You may get those 53, but you're gonna probably get more people that are gonna say.
Get 75.
Yeah, 75 that say no, just because you came back with the same number, right? I, I keep hearing my, my, my mom, I love I'm saying this right now, but I keep hearing my mom say in my head, like, you know, don't cut your nose off to spite your face, right? Like, you know, if the townspeople said that you made a mistake by, by the offering that you made, then you try to correct it, and like, you just do the best you can. So, I feel like that's what you're doing, is trying to correct it, doing the best you can.
Yeah, it is unfortunate, but this is the way that this town runs, is, to your point, this is the way we've always done it, is we do exactly what we need for the now instead of sizing something appropriately, so that we don't have to come back in the future. Even the roadmap of a plan to get to where you want it to be, is going to cost the town more than 14 million dollars at the end of the day, right? Unfortunately, we seem to not be able to understand those details, and this is the way it has to go forward. It's sad, and I don't like that, but that's the reality. So, I think that this is the best plan in order to get something, so that we have something usable for our seniors, something usable for emergency management, something usable for food pantry, this community requires it.
And I think what even, what we're, we're looking to cut down, if it's still double the size of what we have now, it's a vast improvement, right? For the town, for services, for what we can offer, I mean, it's a vast improvement.
Yeah. My only concern is that the 10 million doesn't impact the cost to the taxpayer in a percentage that makes them happy, like.
It's like 20 bucks.
Well, if you look at it.
10 bucks, right.
It's 149.
For 500,000.
And then we'll take it down to about 10 million, somewhere around 119.
That's a psychological level though, right?
It is.
Uh, 119.99.
Mike only wanted to be 999.
What I'm saying, like.
We're gonna work it.
They know how to do it retail, right, like, so it's the same thing.
I don't, but I think we have to listen to the voters, right?
Definitely.
Yeah.
And I think historically, just being here, watching votes for money and overrides, any solution, excuse me. Always winds us up in the same place, you gotta come back a second time. My kids went to a different high school because we were, we missed the vote for the school system, and we got out of credit. Once the town figured out a smaller building, a smaller budget, and they voted it through a year or two later, then my kids came back in with a building, school, and building.
No matter what, this new 10 million dollar building would be significantly better than everything we have now, and the, the town, the town will make it work, uh, and unfortunately, we will end up spending more money in the end, more than the 14 million to get to where we should've gotten to, right?
And who knows, maybe a lot, you should rebuild that thing out differently, and maybe there's room for a community building and another project that comes together with some of that kind of house.
Could you put also the cost, you know, what keeps getting brought up, but I feel like needs a little bit more like emphasis, is, um, using that building for, you know, parks and highway?
You're talking about the current building?
The current building, if, if that cost could be represented as a savings, cause it is, for the town, that also might, I don't know what that building, like, like its asset value is to us as a town, but that is a value to this project, so.
Those words have been said in different places, but I don't think that was digested of, look, presenting the overall plan, and this is, this has come up in FinCom in a few places, where, show me everything together and show me how it all adds up, right? So it's not just the, the senior center, which, you know, okay, now, senior community center, there's all those things built into it, but then the parks and rec piece of it, what would we have spent on those buildings in order to get them what they need? Assuming that's going to become a public works department at some point, right? So what does that whole thing look like, and what is the total value? So what does that whole thing look like and what is the total value to the town that we're bringing with the total project? More than just, this is what we want you to spend, it's like, this is what we want you to spend now, and it's, this is why this is going to save you this much money in the future.
That's, I mean, if you look at the building right next door to us, that's what happened with the library, right? So it was like, you know, we're we're building a new building, we're spending this money, but we're also reusing the old building to expand the town hall and not spend that extra money. You know, there, right? So there's a lot of precedent for that as well.
It might be interesting enough, the architect, we could take a look at valuing a small theoretically project. Because it's not, the only ask we have in this, you know, for some money for a barn or something or a shed a couple of years ago for parts.
We have money allocated for a redesign study at the original senior center pass. We have money, we have money pocketed to look at, do some design work there, so that money is actually sitting there.
Can we parallel the efforts? That's a risk.
Yeah, I mean, I, you could talk to Mike and say, if we had to blocks through, I mean, we get, their basement is the basement. For the the parks vehicles and it's on the space on top.
Maybe I talk to Michael.
Ballpark, what a cost like that would be for redesign versus the net we built.
At least we have a, to your point, a value, take the whole story, the old buildings worth this, town benefits from this amount.
Yeah, people, I think the hardest part of the last discussion with the town was that it that people don't want to hear the rest of the story. Right? They want to hear that story all at once and that you didn't adjust then, even if you didn't. That you didn't come back and tell a different story later about this side thing here and that side thing there, and it's really this and it's really that. We all understood that and didn't correct you, so we apologize for that.
Some things are important though, as we talk about priorities, I think I said around first meeting. As the priorities of the other requests, I think, concerns about schools, we're looking, I'm trying to recruit some school, school committee people onto this committee.
Yeah.
Our committee, the things about recreation, no one had visibility, and I I meet people, I said, gather yourself together, put for, we all did. Go before the different committees and the select board.
I was floored, absolutely floored when I asked you, did anybody approach you about multi-use fields on that facility? I was floored to hear that not a single person had approached you on that, floored.
There is a group that that's meeting now to talk about.
Oh, yeah, no, I've 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 been talking with them and the first, as soon as, as soon as I heard that, I I emailed them and I said, how could you not talk to these people? Like, how was this not part of their conversation?
I mean, their focus is on school fields, on that process. So I think I both attended their meeting. You know, I just made the point, this is actually, that's a piece of a larger recreational field, which all the youth sports leagues nodded, because they said, yeah, that. You putting a turf field in the high school is not going to address my need. Practice, et cetera, so it's.
It's a huge. So what do you need to recognize?
Right, this is one of those things that we collectively need to think about, how do we get after it, right?
And that's kind of where I was going with it, is there a way to add value to the project? I mean, can you imagine, or you forget, there's a multi-use field there for you, for the youth sports teams to utilize?
But it's the same price, right? But there's a multi-use field now.
I think a different study would need to be done because a multi-use field has very different parking needs than a senior center, I'm pretty sure.
Totally, I mean, that just, that blows up a lot for him, yeah.
Because stick to what have you next use, let's get the commercial in there next to the senior center, they go, they they go well together and. Then we can make the case that we're actually driving revenue by developing that and we're.
And that would, that would be even better, like. I would love to put the multi-use fields in, but there's part of me that would like to go outside of the town and be able to charge people to use those fields. So we need other, other sources of revenue for doing this now.
And we've been working on this for ten years, not myself personally, but.
All right, so let's rewind the conversation back to FinCom.
And I looked at chapter forty, section six real quick, and it says, Nick is right, it says extraordinary or unforeseen. And then it describes what unforeseen is, it's just an expenditure you couldn't anticipate, so I'd say this is well within that realm. We didn't anticipate it, we didn't anticipate you need more money for redesign, so I think that's unforeseen expense.
Yeah, I this is Nick, I I just, just procedurally, I disagree. I mean, the idea that the vote would come back negatively is not something that would be unforeseen. That's something that would be completely plausible. And, you know, that a contingency might need to be put in place for a redesign may should have been initially thought of. It it's a procedural question for me, not what's the right thing to do for the town, but it's a procedural question about the reserve fund for other departments.
I understand. Okay, I appreciate it. Jack, anything else?
Yeah, yeah, I I I I agree, I agree with with Nick on unforeseen. But as as I read the, as I read the statute here, the statute provides for. To provide for quote extraordinary or unforeseen expenditures. So I think extraordinary, there's probably enough elasticity there to capture what we're, what we're trying to achieve here. So while I do agree with Nick, I I I I don't think it falls out of the unforeseen bucket, it was certainly foreseeable that it would be declined. But I think instead, we could rely on extraordinary as a basis here for the expenditure.
Okay. Ron, is there any, any discussion from you?
Yeah. Yeah. I I I do agree that I believe it is extraordinary for sure. And I wouldn't want to vote against this from the perspective of a FinCom member. Just because I I do think that this has to move forward, and I do think this is extraordinary, I I agree. It is extraordinary.
Yeah, I mean. I'm supportive because I believe it's necessary, and I also believe that this is the best vehicle to do so, which ends up spending. A small amount of money to save the town a significant amount of money. So we need to vote on first, right?
Okay.
All right, so can I get a motion to allocate up to ten thousand dollars for the use of.
Architectural.
Architectural and engineering design for reviewing the senior community center.
Uh, redesign and.
Redesign.
And 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 I so move. Jack.
Aye.
All those in favor?
I second it, Ron zig. Aye.
Jack, aye.
Nay.
Nay.
Oh, yeah, so I'm aye, so three to one. Uh, it passes, so we can allocate funds.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. So I move to authorize the board to, uh, shoot Ron, when I move to author. Um, I I move to authorize the expenditure of FinCom reserves in an amount not to exceed ten thousand dollars for the purpose of funding. A redesign of the senior and commute and community center.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Brugos, aye.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
We're going to be back by the seventeenth for the, for the round question. Great, can I get a motion to close FinCom?
I so move, Jack.
Second, Ron.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Aye.
Jack, aye.
Aye. Ron, aye.
Thanks, guys, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great, thanks, everybody.
Thanks for taking, have a good weekend.
All right, so we're moving on to the agenda item number fourteen.
Good job.
So we received a letter from Verizon New England. Uh, they're proposing to apply for a grant to help develop a fiber optic broadband network, meaning underserved areas. And they're asking for a letter of support, so I'm just going to read this into the record real quick. Uh, so, dear Massachusetts Broadband Institute, men and sisters, letters of support in conjunction with Verizon's application to the Massachusetts Broadband Institute for the Broadband Infrastructure Gap Network Grant Program. We are pleased that Verizon plans to expand their fiber optic network and facilitate broadband for underserved and underserved residents and businesses in Mendon. Access to broadband was critical to full, uh, to full participation in this local band economy, including work from home, connecting with a lot of more Chinese, a lot of educating children remotely. And accessing critical talent and health services. In response to these needs in Mendon, Verizon will deploy their fiber network to many locations that either lack or have inadequate broadband service. Service with a particular focus on gated municipalities and qualified census tract locations consistent with the programs' objectives. Many residents would benefit from an increased range of search speed services without which can score. For economic development, educational achievements, health medicine advancement and other critical needs that Massachusetts prioritizes for its citizens. In order to provide broadband access to these residents, I think that most of them will support Verizon's effort to obtain funding to further the potential of broadband broadband services in our community. We view this as an opportunity to better quality of life in these communities that are so dependent on a reliable and quality broadband infrastructure to keep their residents connected through years to come. Uh, and if we authorize the sign, I would be signing by myself. So this is just the first step in a grant application, but it requires a letter of support from the target community, so.
So can I ask, like, doesn't Verizon files, like, fiber optic already covered our whole thing?
So I was just telling John, I I did the details to that when I was a patrolman, so.
Yes, I still don't fully know that.
I remember doing all the fiber.
I definitely opened a little light truck, doing everything the whole time, give a long detail. So like, I'm I'm in total support, like, I know what this is from nationally, and I'm in like total support of the rural broadband act, but like. Where for these that don't have the. Staff, I guess, yeah, I mean, if it means that they're going to come and actually fill gaps that might exist that we don't know about, then absolutely, but it's like.
That was what was advertised in the universe.
Okay. There's some communities, like I think colonial, that didn't have the infrastructure for it, and most of their stuff's underground with them at the dig at the time, so there are certain. There are places that are like, that don't have it, because there's no telephone poles, and they didn't design it properly, so it's like babies.
Yeah, it's it's, yeah, it's hard to think of this as a rural broadband community, but.
Yeah.
But okay.
But open for discussion, so that was requested to support, and I wanted to bring it forward.
Uh, what's the grant?
It's the Massachusetts Broadband Institute for Broadband Infrastructure Gap Network Grant Program. To to grant to develop underserved communities.
Okay.
All right, if any more discussion, if anyone wants to do to make a motion.
I move to authorize the board and support, uh, to support Verizon New England Incorporated in their efforts to apply for a grant to expand broadband access in Mendon. And to further authorize the vice chair to sign a letter of consent.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Brugos, aye.
All right, thank you very much. So moving on to executive session, I move to enter into executive session, agenda thirty eight, section twenty one A, reaching other groups, conduct strategy to respect the collective bargaining or relegation if an open meeting may have detrimental effect. On the bargaining or litigation position of the public body, and the chair so declares, highway, fire, police and town hall collective bargaining agreements. The board will reconvene in open session for the purpose of adjournment and no additional actions.
What?
Second.
All right, can you get a roll call?
Who der aye?
Who der aye?
Brugos, aye.
Aye.
So is, is it going to be on the same team's link?
All right, moving on to item, agenda item number sixteen. Announce acceptance sign completed in MOAs. So I'll be looking for some motions.
I'm going to approve and sign the MOA for fire, uh, fire collective bargaining agreement dated. Is it yesterday? What's the date of the MOA? Fire wanted you guys to, last meeting?
Yeah, last meeting, August eighteenth.
It's fourteenth. Friday meeting?
Yeah.
June fourteenth, that's right, twenty twenty four, we get that one.
Solid second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Brugos, aye.
Dave, you fill a date for me, I move approve and sign the MOA for police collective bargaining agreement dated.
Today? June twenty sixth.
June twenty sixth.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Brugos, aye.
Let's get, uh. Not doing the D, right? You're going to.
So that's, that's it for the MOAs?
Yeah.
For the MOAs. Uh, so moving on to the next agenda item. Discuss and authorize cost of living adjustments for FY twenty five and twenty six for non-union employees. So in giving with previous precedent, we're looking to match negotiated increases for non-union employees to those of union employees.
So, oh, go ahead. I, you're writing all the rest, I'm trying to give you some more space. I move to authorize the cost of living adjustments in the amount of four percent for FY twenty five and three percent for FY twenty six for non-union employees.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 And similarly, the next agenda item is a similar contract, and it's for non-union contracted department heads, giving them basically the same cost of living adjustment. Uh, so that would be highway, fire, police and library.
And I move that the board approve and sign the cost of living adjustments for the department heads of highway, fire, police as present, as presented.
And library.
And library.
Same. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So that's it, that's it for this agenda. And here we can go.
And we will, uh, the next meeting is.
Seventeenth of July.
July seventeenth, all right, and I move to adjourn tonight's live meeting.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, good morning, Elena, and good night to everybody else. Aye.
Aye.